Yeah. My head is a little tired, but I'm calling the board and ask Mr. Dent, he will lead us in the word of prayer, followed by the same religion, Mr. Dent.
Father, we thank you redenied for your business and mercy. Thank you for your holy name, for your business and mercy. We ask that we go through this hearing, Father, and you put this all over, you know, the deputy's office, we thank you for what you've done, yes, Father, we thank you for what you're gonna do to this country, and we thank you for the name of this nation. If we ask some questions, you would not pray.
Amen. Our very brethren, through the light of the United States of America, and through the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, on item three, before we ask for approval, we're gonna move out of number twelve and thirteen. Item number twelve, Ryan Allen, Department of Defense, to appear to provide updates on the proposed toll road project, and I can't be here today. And item thirteen, Saber Juarez, Administrator, to say something else, Department, to appear to provide updates on the loan of ours, and we also cannot make it today. Well, we're moving out of twelve and thirteen. Are there any other corrections or additions to the legislation from the agenda? For one, do you have any? Now, clerk, do you have any, any commissions? I'll ask now for our motion to approve this agenda. And then, most about Commission American, second by Commission Dent. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye, in opposed, say no. Motion carries, this agenda is approved. Now, I'll move down to item four. The Board should receive bids for the harvesting of four hundred and six acres of case at the Terry County Airport, set for this day at nine AM or soon thereafter as possible. Now, clerk, do we have any bids?
No, so we do not receive any bids.
We have not received any bids on the hedge park. So, we'll move now to item five.
Mr. Page, can I ask permission to re-advertise that and see if we can advertise it one more time, and see if we get this the next time?
Yes, that's all right, we're going, that's fine, all right. Do we need follow-up? Just since this is a board, do we have to add that? One more time.
Do a motion and a second.
All right, we need a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Dent, second by Attorney Dent. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, and you may now read your ad hoc. I would suggest, you might want to, three words, you, uh, what you're trying to sell, I mean, four hundred and five acres is eighty acres of land, and the rest of it has to be planted and that, so, we're talking about that later. Now, on item five, the Board should hold a public hearing set to this date at nine o'clock AM, or as soon thereafter as possible, to consider adoption of a resolution to abandon that portion of eight, eight acres lying between Second Avenue South and Riverside Drive, Walk Sixty-Five, of the scene hatchet division, containing one, eight acres, acres or less. Now, in the recent fact, it appears that there's a lot that has not been approved, all right, Ms. Rose?
Actually, it doesn't, it's, it's.
It's just all fixed.
It's kept.
Right.
Abandon of the right-of-way.
Because they're two landlords, you and another person.
That's the best way to say it.
And you desire that when you abandon that road.
Yes.
Which means, half of it goes from one end and the other end after this, so, we understand what we're dealing with. So, since this is a public hearing, I'm gonna open it up to the public, anybody who wants to speak. If you do, you have three minutes, Lord, just briefly. Come forth, Lord, state your name and address, clerk.
Stand here, forty-nine oh-one Riverside Park, scene hatchet. I'm opposed to closing any more right-of-ways in scene hatchets, because of the growth of scene hatchets and the expected growth that's to come. This particular road is got two things you should be aware of before you close. The first one is that there are water lines and sewer lines going down the right-of-way, and subsequently closed or abandoned, and there's sort of things, the alleyway, it goes between eight street and nine street. There's people on it, there's trees on it. When we have storms, that end is used as a, a back, evacuation, and what I'm talking of today, evacuation route, as well as the other end. Because of the canal that comes up right next to the alley, uh, there is a lot of possible problems, because of wind, there is a possible flood problem. I would appreciate it if you take those things into consideration when you vote it.
I'd like to stand. Is anyone else, if you have a public hearing, who would like to speak for or against? Ms. Rose? State your name and address, clerk.
I'm Little Morgan, I live at seven fifteen Riverside Drive, in scene hatchet. And, I'm not really sure what Mr. Richardson has a, a problem with. Eight street never opened, and the hundred-foot right-of-way goes to the house I own on eight oh three, which is next to mine. There is an alley in between that has nothing to do with anything, it's just an alley. And what's changing this, changes nothing. I mean, you don't have to all get nervous, I'm not building a marina or anything else. All I'm doing is closing the right-of-way, abandoned, because the road never existed. And that way, Mrs. Richardson and I are getting to the age now that it's time to dock the eyes and cross the keys on the property that we own that was owned by our family. And this right-of-way goes straight up to the road, almost to my big house across from Hungry Hollow, and then it goes diagonally down, behind my house and behind that man's house. It has, it doesn't have anything to do with, as you see, the alley between my two houses, that's not what it is. And, all, I mean, that, I don't understand the plan that Mr. Richardson, right, put trees and stuff, yeah, I haven't had a tree out of there in years, and whenever we had a storm for the last thirty-two years, that man and I have cleaned up the result of the storm, we've mowed the property, and we've kept it up for twenty-two years, it's behind our place. And that, all we wanna do is to, it'll never turn into a road, I can't see they're putting a hundred-foot road in there and putting a bridge over a tight creek up Second Avenue, where there's nothing. And there's no more houses on, the people that own Hungry Hollowies, Cottinghams, they own almost to the end of Ninth Street. I own the house on the end of Ninth Street, and no one lives, and that's a real problem, except one trailer's gone empty for years. So, Cottinghams owns from fifty-one down to the creek, I own next to Cottinghams from fifty-one down to the creek, that man owns from creek, fifty-one all the way to creek, so, we're the three landlords that we're not in love to do that. And I don't know how you feel about, I mean, if all of the theory, you don't wanna do it, when that's fine, do it, then, I doubt we're gonna find anything else to do with it, and you gotta remember, you'll get passes from it if we take it back, or whatever you wanna do. But if you do want to close it, we just sort of want to get all of our act together, that takes, that hundred-foot right-of-way, if in the years to come, should open for some reason, we'll take both of our places out. So, that, that's the reason for it, there's not gonna be any changes, not gonna be anything taken, it'll be exactly the way it is probably in over thirty-two years from now. So, but thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Would you, do I ask, who'd like to speak to the board, or the road closed? If not, I oppose the closing, hearing part of this. We'll now go to further discussion. Commissioner Murphy?
Yes, there's been your district, I'll let you speak first. Okay. Um, I have met with Rose, and I have walked out that entire road, okay? And what it looks to me is that that road was cut illegally that one time, where they just decided to go through a pass through. It doesn't look like it was intentionally cut by the county or the state or something like that. So, what it looks like is it divides two properties, and it creates, it's full of traffic that's undesirable for this property. The amount of trash I've seen on the private property, the amount of drug paraphernalia that's been discarded out onto the property, I can't blame her for wanting to close this road down. Had I owned the property, I would petition the government to close the road. And my unit doesn't serve any interest in the closing of the property. So, I am for closing the road in that.
So, we can zoom, you have a zoom?
I don't have a zoom on where we're at now, but we have closed the road for illegal activity, uh, or traffic and stuff like that, and give somebody responsible to keep it up and that's good.
And Mr. Dent?
What you say? I went down there yesterday and walked the road, looked at all of it, looked at all the houses on both sides, and looked at all of it, did my best to set it off, it's almost, it's like one eighty-eight acre, that, uh, trip, and it really, I talked to one gentleman who lives around on the Monday train on the other end, and, uh, he said, only time here, once that we're gonna go for, you know, so, I have no problem with it.
I did not ride down and look at that, I did look at another property near, uh, he's a lease property, I looked at that, but, all the concern I have is, uh, Mr. Richardson standing there, water line and perhaps a sewer line would have, if we worked it, you, uh, drink permission, it was property of his own, can we keep it even, there's water system on that suspicion?
Yep. Well, that's purely my concern, I'm for it. Anybody else have anything to say, before we take action? Scott Shaw?
I have a resolution.
Well, a resolution, I got on the notice. Could someone make a motion to have Mr. Bishop read the resolution?
I'm for it, I'm on there, I'm making a motion to read the resolution.
Discussion by, Commissioner Louie to read the resolution.
I second.
Second by Commissioner Dent. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Dispute.
Being resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, the Taylor County Sheriff, one, as soon to the notice of proceeding to closing the street, due to public according to law, through the publication of which the statute to have made partner of, hearing was duly held at nine o'clock AM on the date of February twenty-twenty, to consider and determine whether or not the county would vacate, abandon, discontinue, and close certain roads in Taylor County Sheriff, more particularly described in the Christmas publication of statute of deeds. At the town and place set, the city and all persons interested, were given the opportunity to be heard, the Board of County Commissioners determined that the proposed action vacating, abandoning, discontinuing, and closing certain roads herein, more particularly described or not, the county first of a reasonable means of ignorance, ignorance, did, promised it, and will not materially interfere with the county's residents, and that's number one.
Next, now, this is the description of the point eighty-eight acres. Now, would you, the men, need to make a motion to approve the abandonment, or should deny the, uh, request of abandonment of the road?
I made motion to approve.
Motion to approve, by Commissioner Murphy.
I'm voting for motion.
And second by Commissioner Louie, which is further discussion. All in favor of the motion to approve the abandonment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Now, before we transfer, Dean, you gonna take care of the Dean's, the part of this?
Y'all gonna need to grant an easement for the, um, water line.
Uh, there's one sewer line that goes back to the trailer behind me, and not only the trailer behind me, but behind my house, but, yeah, I did walk into that sewer line in there, so, it's, 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 you know. But, yeah, I do can have whatever, I, I said, the property's not gonna change, it will be like it is, and it's still, it's unfortunate it's where it is.
I think you got it, okay. All right. Now.
What are you saying, let it go?
When I started with me, you know, I'm Mr. Everett's board meeting, I could explain to Commissioner thing, I was not here because she's very sick, and I get sick, it's, it keeps me in practice. And, uh, you know, we lose all the rules, if you need to say anything, you have what seems like three minutes, you say, raise your hand, somebody'll get my attention, if I don't think, if we need to speak, you know, if we're about to abandon, just, probably be, looking forward to board meeting eventually, but we'll make it through, for the health of our clerk, here, my attorney, I've no threat, they're all three problems, we're on item six, somebody in him.
I might say something else, over leading on five. I thought, Ms. Rose, make, wanna make sure she understood that the tax is, is gonna change on that, for taxes will change.
Right.
It, both, both y'all know that, that if taxes will change, so y'all will get happy with that property.
Right.
You know, you know, everybody understanding that it is, that taxes will go up with all the, of, um.
You're happy to help you.
Good point, that brought that up, Commissioner. Number six, the Board should consider an application for a mud bog special event, that is our March mud bog site, to be held March five through eight, May fifteenth through seventeen, and October fifteenth through eighteen, two thousand twenty, three events, the count expected to be greater than one thousand, set for this date at nine fifteen AM or soon thereafter as possible. Now, Commissioner Louie, you saw all the information about the mud bog?
This is not the first time we've approved the mud bog, uh, application. Uh, I personally have no objection to it, brings some of our folks in the town, uh, die gasoline, any, uh, rest, so, we need to make a motion, to pass, do you approve this application or deny?
All right. What's the, spread to the board?
I made motion to approve.
All right, uh, motion by Commissioner Murphy to approve. I'll ask, before we go further to the board's action, if there are any comments, the votes will not be made. Haven't heard none. Okay, a motion by Commissioner Murphy.
I'm for it.
Second by Commissioner Dent. Further discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, we approve this, our March mud bog application. Now, on the consent items, there are four items, seven through ten on the consent agenda. Is anybody, any board member or staff, wishing to lose any of these items for separate discussion? If not, I'll ask our motion to approve, to approve all consent items. That, I'm, motion by Commissioner Dent, second by Commissioner Louie, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, consent items are approved. Now, our next item is item eleven, the Board should consider the confirmation of the continuation of existing representative, Mr. Page, and or the apartment of a new representative, on the Twenty River Economic Council, board of directors, as a question about that, which is the executive director. Now, I served for quite a long time as a representative for Taylor County, and I believe that our ordinary legal meeting, that, that Mr. Dent, and you agree to take that, well, did I? Did you tell that to you? Well, you didn't, you didn't take it. You want to do it?
It doesn't make any difference, I'll do it.
All right. Commissioner Dent, say he will, and, and what would he do along the central letter of this petition? And the court, I'll do it. Now, we need a motion, I need a motion to that, second, motion by Commissioner Louie, and second by Commissioner Murphy. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. You're the one that's getting, yeah, so the kid go there, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Got, we're making a lot of pride pictures. Now, we eliminated, or removed item twelve, Ryan Allen, and we have eliminated number thirteen, Saber Juarez, and now, we're gonna hear from Scott Mitchell, Public Affairs Director, and Keth Thompson, Fenn Hallway Program Manager, Goodyear City, so he's saying this mill, to appear to provide an update on the Fenn Hallway Waterfall property. Scott Morgan, yes, welcome.
Thank you guys again for, uh, having us and allowing us to come routinely and orderly and provide updates on the Fenn Hallway Waterfall property. Uh, this morning, I'm just gonna turn it over to Keth, we do have a few things that we wanna update you on, and we do have a request that we'd like to make, so, I'll just turn it over to Keth, and, uh, let him begin with his presentation.
As, as we do every quarter, you know, they give you an update on the progress, and I, uh, want you to know that about ninety-two percent of the pipe is in place, uh, we just have a little bit more to go on the, on the length, we, since the last time I spoke to you, we, uh, we made two key crossings, uh, public road crossings, Golf Course Road and the Hampton Springs Crossing. Uh, things that are currently going on right now, uh, is a crossing at US nineteen ninety-eight, which is worth of the DOC, uh, crossing, I, I want to be upfront, we had some settling in the road out there that has come to light this, uh, this week, and we're working with DOC on a repair plan, and a, uh, restoration plan, and, uh, and anticipation of a later work with the county, or looking at what we will do differently to ensure it doesn't happen on a pocket road crossing coming up, because the technique where we use, or plan to use the pocket road is the same as we used out there on US nineteen ninety-eight, and so, working through that right now. And, uh, I want you to know, we're finishing, if you're driven down to the lower bump ramp, you'll know that there's a long stretch of single lanes down there on the bottom end, where we're actually laying the pipe in the, uh, road right away there, and so, that's ongoing right now. So, that's activities right now, some key things that have got remained, and, uh, the remaining things are, as I just mentioned, that pocket road crossing, and we anticipate that here within the next thirty days, but we need to work through some technique, uh, questions that we got based on what we saw at US nineteen, we got, uh, new stormwater ponds, we'll be building for the county there at the roll-off site, there at the Carlton Cemetery, uh, roll-off site, and then, I, I wanna mention something I, I don't think I've talked about, is, you know, we laid all this pipe, and all this pipe, because of the amount of groundwater, has sand and sediment, and so, we're, the construction crews are very much in the process of cleaning this pipe out, so, we've got almost seventy-three thousand feet of pipe that's laying out there, working very hard on, that actually has become our critical path on time right now. Uh, we got a patch still at Terry Stevens Road, where it's been waiting to make sure we don't damage that again, Terry Stevens Road, uh, needs to be patched, we got to rebuild that lower portion of the, of, uh, we got to rebuild Peterson Landing Road, we got to rebuild the lower portion of the Hampton Springs Road, right where we're laying pipe, we got to restore the Lower Hampton Springs Road, basically from the correctional institutions down, if you've been down there, you know, we, we done a fair amount of damage on that road during the work process, and so, we've got to restore that, and, uh, and then we got to do initial testing, and so, all that, say, quality work left to do, uh, you all had granted us permission to keep, uh, Peterson Landing Road closed through March of this year, and we're requesting to extend that all the way through the end of the pipe, so that everything is done. One of the things we had much concern with is to try to reopen it, and then have to come back and request for a partial reclosure and timing to get things done, and so, we are requesting for an extension through the end of July, to ensure we can complete all the work, so, that's our request.
You think they give you enough time, though?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, and that is got.
I don't have enough time to do this twice, but be sure we get it, give it up, twice, five.
I, I, I'm in total agreement, and I've got commitment from the contractor, that, uh, they believe it will be done, I, I certainly hope that I'm not back eating crow and have to come afterward again, um, but, uh, we, we right now, with the state, uh, just, um, you know, we have a, a regulatory commitment for this thing to be up and running and operational by March of next year, so, we've actually got a year, we as a company wanna be six months ahead of that, so, our, our timing has from the beginning, then, that we are gonna put this thing in service by September of this year, six months ahead of the deadline, to make sure there's no issues, and we're still committed and on track to do that, and frankly, we've gotta have all this done by the end of July to be able to do that at times, but, yes, it.
And Keth will continue to remain a, so, you still have access?
We don't have access to Keth.
I do appreciate, not only the commission, but the public patience, you know, there's been a fair amount of road traffic down there continuing to hit, and people have to wait, you know, there's a, a signage there that they, they have to wait, and it's, I've been grateful, people have been patient, and, uh, getting in and out of hits and all of that, uh, we're, much cooperation.
I haven't had some complaints.
Good.
You know, you gotta lie down there, there's a couple weeks about now, this thing's dry, depending on progress, and that's quite an undertake.
It has been.
I tell you, if you could fix the place with more rock, then.
Or more, or more water.
I'd be, I'd be, I'd be glad for you to get that done.
Yes, sir.
Rock and roll.
Rock and roll.
All right, anybody from the public who wanna ask any questions, if that's any comment. Appreciate the good work you guys have done.
Yes, I'd love to say one thing, I must say, y'all, work with safe about getting the trees out of the roof, we talked about that in the past, that's, that's been, we're finding out, some, the people using upper boot run, with bigger boots, trail boots and stuff, they have issue with when it ties down, or trees are, that fell down in that last hurricane, too, it's, it's down, down the wall there a little bit.
That would be perfect.
We've been working that direction, I, I appreciate that, and maybe, could extend that parting a little bit, if we're gonna be a longer, you know, any of the scholar feedings, I think, you know, and that kind of thing, it'd be nice, but it's gonna be a lot of people using that round, you know, who want to touch them.
Allow us a little bit of time to discuss that, figure options, but.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate y'all working direction, it's good.
And you can discuss it with the board, and comment as well. We need a motion, um, to approve or accept this report.
I need a motion to extend that deadline for July.
You need a motion to, well, let's do it, this way.
I make a motion.
Motion to extend the deadline until July the 31st.
Thirty-first.
July the thirty-first.
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Louie, second by Commissioner Dent. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. And we'll make note in the minutes that we have received the quarterly report. All right. Item fifteen, Brian Rogers, Attorney Paul Rogers, Duncan and Kendra Rogers, he has to appear to the judge, code enforcement, Mr. Rogers here.
Uh, yes, sir.
That's your name and your address, clerk.
Um, Brian Rogers, uh, from Kenan and Kendra in five eighty-two, Westy Ball Street, Lake City Clare, uh, representing Warren and Dark, the Dowling, uh, reference, uh, eighteen twenty-four, Del Beach Road.
Are, is there any of those folks here?
They aren't, and, and they send their apologies, uh, Mr. Dowling just had open-heart surgery, and is in the ICU, Mrs. Dowling needed to stay with him, uh, certainly to the extent that the commission would hear from them personally, I may have to extend this to another time that they could be there, but I'm, I'm prepared to represent directly to them today.
Okay.
Um, I do have, uh, some information, if I, if I may, to hand to the, to the commission, the legal commission. Um, if I can, just give a little bit of the, uh... Um, if I can just give a little bit of the, uh, the background, um, of why I'm here, and then ultimately, yes, to the relief I'm requesting on behalf of my client, um, it really kind of starts in nineteen ninety-three, where, um, there was a, I'm sure you all remember much better than I did, given that I was eighteen years old living in Dayton Beach at this time, but there was a, a superstorm, a cyclonic superstorm in nineteen ninety-three that basically came up out of nowhere, that's now been referred to as the Storm of the Century, that battered the west coast of Florida and ultimately went up through the southeast United States and the Midwest United States, um, causing substantial property damage, ultimately taking, I think, forty-four lives, unless I looked it up. Um, this included substantial property damage to the properties that are along the coast here in Taylor County, specifically in Del Beach, Eagle Beach, and Peaton Beach. And, um, nineteen ninety-five, a state body, uh, called the Florida Board of Internal, uh, I'm sorry, I think it's the, the trust fund, Internal Wealth and Trust Fund, Board of Trustees, which was made up essentially of all the state officials at that time, and, and through the years, any state officials, including the governor and the commissioner of agriculture, the, uh, attorney general, uh, and other officials met and essentially came up with a program to help people to rebuild, uh, their properties following the destruction from the Storm of the Century. Uh, this involved essentially engaging a land swap with the state, um, and the reason for that was they wanted to ensure that the property owner, the affected property owner had enough property that would, that would be seaward of the land, and the lands are relatively small. Um, and then it was also for the benefit of the state and for the benefit of citizens, citizens of the state, it was quiet title to all the sovereigns' submerged lands out there as well. Um, fast forward to two thousand twelve, and that same Board of Trustees, although, um, manned by different officials by this time, recognized in hindsight that not many people avail themselves of that program for a variety of reasons, economic conditions, um, being specifically named, and the fact that there wasn't sewer facilities available then, uh, which was important, and the fact that they incentivized your horizon for people to be able to take advantage of this, and they just couldn't do it. So then, again, two thousand sixteen, and the same Board of Trustees met again, approved the same program again with four-year horizon. And it's, and, and basically what it involved is that the affected property owners engaged in this land swap with the state, uh, and then obtained the appropriate permits they could build or rebuild, really, to what was there circa nineteen ninety-three. Um, my clients purchased the property in, uh, I don't have the date rather than time, I have it's either late two thousand sixteen or early two thousand seventeen, they purchased this property eighteen twenty-four, Del Beach Road. Uh, they intended to get an RV permit, to do that as a weekend getaway, have an RV out there. They then get this letter in the mail from the state offering this, this, uh, land exchange, um, and the, in, in the, in the package that I handed out, that's where the agenda, uh, is contained from that two thousand sixteen meeting, in addition to, um, the letter from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and the what claimed either my, my client ultimately, um, uh, execute and, and record. And so basically what happened is my clients were able to get eighty feet of land seaward of the seawall that was already there. The state got about forty feet of land from, from the description of their land from their deeds, uh, and now the state sovereigns' submerged lands were quieted, and my clients had the land they needed to be able to rebuild the structures that were out there, which included basically a very long dock and a, and a residential, small residential facility. Um, they then began, and by they, I mean my clients, then began going through the pretty arduous process of, of permitting this project. And, um, that involved getting the approval of the Florida Department of Environmental Protection to grant the general permit, which they obtained. Um, it involved going to the Army Corps of Engineers, uh, who actually originally, um, denied the, the approval, um, based on some, the, essentially what the suggested height of the building was going to be, based on what they saw as needing to be the, the floodplain line. Um, but they ultimately approved it with some changes. Um, my clients also went to the county, to Taylor County Building Authority, and asked for a permit, and they were told they didn't need a permit from Taylor County at that time, and they were given two reasons for that. The first was, uh, the project called for a dock, a feeding area, storage area, and, um, a screen room. And Taylor County folks said that we don't, we don't permit screen rooms, number one, and number two, which I think is probably more relevant for our, our conversation here today, is we don't permit things that are built over the water. Um, and so, from my client's perspective, they, they saw that essentially this domain for this area that they were building or really rebuilding on was the state and the federal government's domain and not Taylor County's. Um, they hired a liking contractor, uh, a, a local liking contractor, and they set about building this project. Um, it, it was originally intended to be a screen room with, with electricity inside of the ceiling fans and things like that. Uh, as is often the case, it was my experience from before law school, I was a big carpenter. Um, the project changed and they decided they wanted to add specifically, and I think what, what the major problem was, that ultimately came up in the case of a bathroom inside the facility, and they put the windows up and, and, uh, to keep the rain from driving through the screen. And so, when, when they decided to add the bathroom, they reached out to the, and there's some emails and this type of information, they reached out to the Army Corps of Engineers again, basically to say, hey, is it okay if we have a bathroom? My contractor wants to know if it's okay if you build the bathroom for us in here. And the response from the Army Corps was, is there going to be anything that's changing about the footprint of your project? And there wasn't, it was just putting it in the footprint they had asked for. The Army Corps basically said you can have a thousand square feet of footprint, we're actually building a little under four hundred square feet of footprint, and they said nothing, nothing changes as long as the footprint can change. So they went on with the, the project, um, with the bathroom, and, and essentially, they, they completed the project with their, uh, licensed contractor. In fact, in August of two thousand eighteen, that's another email that's contained in the package of information I provided, there is an email from the Department of Environmental Protection to a number of people, including the, uh, Taylor County Building Authority, saying, um, that we have gone out and, and looked at the project, um, the only thing, major thing that's changed by our estimation is that it was supposed to be a screen room and there now appears to be a small residential facility, but otherwise, it's, um, it's in compliance. Uh, the, the structure's footprint, that's the permit, that's in compliance. So they began to enjoy their, their weekend getaway. Um, I will say that Mr. Dowling's, um, health keeps, I think he's eighty-two years old now, his health started to deteriorate pretty quickly, so they weren't able to enjoy it quite as much as they had hoped to be able to do so. Um, and, uh, he had not only heart problems, but, um, he may be about to be diagnosed with Alzheimer's disease, so he's not making any memories at this point, so, um, but in any event, they decided, uh, at that point to sell the property, because they couldn't get, they couldn't get here anymore. And it's when they put the property up for sale to the local realtor, local realtor put it on, um, a commercial real estate site called Zillow, and I think it's at that point that the building officials noticed the structure and, and saw the photos of it and decided it didn't comply with the local, uh, code, which was February two thousand nineteen. And they issued a, uh, a notice of code violation to my client, my client then hired me at that point. Uh, we went to a code enforcement hearing before the code enforcement magistrate. Um, and I will, I'll, just as I said to the code enforcement magistrate, I will say this to, to this commission, that by the, um, letter of the code absolutely, this was, this was a violation, and I, and I'll talk about the specific violation and what the problem was here. Uh, the Army Corps of Engineers says that the project needs to be fifteen feet high, that's what it's built at. Um, Taylor County Authority said it needs to be twenty-two feet high. Uh, in order for, um, and we've already talked about how Taylor County doesn't permit projects over the water, but because this project was going to have a, a bathroom, in order essentially to be able to make it, um, fly under the code, my clients would have to build the seawall out a little further and fill in the area of the seawall, and potentially create land under this, this structure. Um, and neither of those things were done, and at this point it was impossible to do either of those things, even if the project was already complete anyway. But that was, that was the problem, that was the code that was in, uh, in violation, uh, that, that my client's been violation of. Um, I will say that, uh, what we presented to the code enforcement magistrate wasn't, we're not in violation of the code, but rather what, what lawyers refer to as an affirmative sentence, basically saying, even though this is a violation, we still shouldn't be held accountable because. And the because was basically under the, uh, the theory of a color, color of legal authority, uh, or what we call stoppage, meaning my client had clean hands here. They sought out the approval and received the approval from every level of government. Um, and it's true that they didn't get ultimate approval from Taylor County, but when they asked for approval from Taylor County, they were told they didn't need approval from Taylor County. And so, while it certainly stands to reason that one, when they decided to change something about the project, why didn't they go back to Taylor County and ask again? Again, I think we look at it from a reasonable person standard and say that if, if, uh, Taylor County's telling them, we don't pro, we don't permit projects that are over the water, and they feel that the domain, that's the domain of the state and the federal government, they've gotten the permission of the state and the federal government. It, it, I don't think it would necessarily made any sense to them to do something like add a seawall and create land under this, this project, number one. Sure they had, um, a licensed contractor, uh, nothing about this project was being done in secret, uh, you know, they weren't only building on the weekends, um, everything was done in the open, um, and it just turns out that there was a violation of the code. Um, so, in any event, and, and, and by the way, just for the, there's, there's some photos at the back of the, um, of the package that I handed you all, and I think the photos are important because the first few photos are, are the before photos, what this property looked like when, when my client purchased it, and then the last photos are what it looked like after the project was built. And these photos are important because, number one, it, it shows that essentially what was there was just ruined, and what, what is there now is actually quite a nice building and dock and facility that's really kind of, uh, in my opinion, improved the neighborhood. Um, but also, again, when, when we, when we think about where the authority comes from for this project, which was to try to reset the table from the Storm of the Century nineteen ninety-three. This project in, in nineteen ninety-three was not fifteen feet high, according to, um, the shore photos that I can now have here today. It was almost at ground level, but it definitely had plumbing. In fact, you can see in these photos that the pipes are still laying on the ground. There's a photo here, uh, one of the photos shows that there's a hole in, uh, the seawall, uh, where the drainpipe exited, uh, the, the seaward line into the land area. Uh, and in, in additionally, additionally, they will, my clients were required to hook into the local sewer system as a result of, uh, of engaging this program that was offered out of the state, and they did so. Um, and so, uh, the, the, the fact that there's a sewer facility out there and that they were required to, to hook into, I mean, further, um, goes to this reasonable person standard that I'm asserting here today that, that I don't, that said, I'm asserting that it wouldn't have made sense for my clients necessarily to go back and ask for permission. Most importantly, there's nothing about anything my clients did here that they were trying to get away with. And so, we asked for this, um, a stop, a affirmative defense, the code enforcement magistrate rejected it. We then, according to chapter forty-two of the State Code, uh, County Code Board, is that we sought to go to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals to ask for a variance of the, of the building, uh, department, uh, interpretation of the code. Unfortunately, there isn't Board of, uh, Adjustments and Appeals constituted right now. So, we essentially asked the code enforcement magistrate to, to take that role as well, and the year would essentially would have been a request for equitable release. Um, and the, and the, specifically, if the Board of Adjustments and Appeals is permitted to grant a variance, I think the claim is important. Permit to grant a variance of any provision of this code to any particular case when, in his opinion, the enforcement thereof would do manifest injustice and would be contrary to the spirit and purpose of the code or the public interest. Uh, so we made our, our pitch to the magistrate sitting in the capacity of the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and the, the pitch was largely the things I've been talking about here today. Um, number one, um, my client has clean hands. Number two, um, the, the, to the extent that this, um, the application of this code, uh, what's important to understand is that to grant this variance is allowed in the project as stand as is, it doesn't cost the citizens of Taylor County anything, it doesn't cost the Taylor County, uh, government anything. Um, in fact, if anything, it probably adds to the tax base because of the improvements to the property and generally the improvements to the neighborhood. If, if there's an argument to be made about, for example, public safety, that we have these codes, which is one of the reasons for public safety, um, there's a few things I would say about that. First, if the structure never got long down to nineteen ninety-three, it wouldn't even have been fifteen feet, it would be a ground level right now. Uh, number two, even at fifteen feet, we all recognize that in reasonably that the, that the danger is a windstorm, not so much a flood. If there's going to be some flood that's going to flood fifteen feet high versus twenty-two feet high, something's not hardly wrong. Um, but, so it's mostly about a windstorm anyway, and the windstorm danger is the same at fifteen feet as it is at twenty-two feet. Um, the other thing is, is I don't, I mean, I would hope that nobody's ever gonna stay inside this structure during some kind of natural disaster that might cause a problem for the public safety, and so, but the, but finally, if you go out to those neighborhoods, there's a whole bunch of properties that are in different, different situations, many of which are, are lower than fifteen feet, many of which are, you know, at or about fifteen feet, many of which are full residential structures with electricity and plumbing and everything, and so there's nothing that's unique about this particular project in that neighborhood that makes it stand out in any way. Um, and in fact, uh, I don't know why there's a disagreement between the, the United States Army and, um, Taylor County, which respect the fifteen versus twenty-two feet, but at the very least, there is one government authority who decided the fifteen feet is high enough. Um, I would also assert that with respect to manifest injustice, the money's already spent, um, this project has already been built. Had my clients, um, uh, gotten approval from Taylor County in the first place, it maybe wouldn't have been built differently, or not built at all, who knows? You can't know that now in hindsight. Um, but, but the money having been spent by people who tried, and I think in their minds did everything correctly, at this point, what they've been ordered to do is to tear all of the improvements back down, and so, not only they're going to have to probably permit that project, spend the money on contractors, tear all the, the improvements back down, but they have now thrown away all the money that they spent to build the improvements in the first place. Um, but they nothing to say, that that would then decrease the value of this property for, for the neighborhood, for the tax base, um, and for whomever is ultimately gonna own that property. And so, that's the, that's what we asked for, essentially equitable, simply saying it would do manifest injustice, and it would be contrary to the, to the, to the public interest. Public interest, one of the core values of public interest, in my opinion, is, um, the sanctity of person's property rights, and that also was rejected by the magistrate, and so now, I stand before you all, asking, um, pursuant to authority, I think that's granted to this commission by chapter forty-two of your ordinances, to seek an appeal of that. Sort of the first level, um, relief that I would seek would be to reverse the decision of the magistrate, um, and find that our affirmative defense should have been accepted, and find that the, that Taylor County should be stopped from, from, um, enforcing this particular code in this particular case. And failing that, the second relief I would ask is for you to grant that relief that the Board of Adjustments and Appeals should have granted, which is a variance of this code in these particular circumstances. And the last thing I want to say is I'm cognizant of the idea that footprints work, I'm cognizant of setting a precedent that, that is, um, maybe not wanted to be set in certain circumstances. The only I would say is I don't think that this case in any way would qualify as precedent, given all of the, all the factors involved here. Recall, this is a, this is a property that was destroyed in the Storm of the Century that had a building with plumbing. This is a property that, um, authority was granted by, um, the state government for a four-year window that's gonna be closed here in a few months anyway, uh, to rebuild, that needed a general permit from the D E C, that needed approval from the Army Corps of Engineers. Um, and, uh, if you collect all of those types of factors together, I'm not sure there's anybody else that's in that situation currently in Taylor County. If there is, quite frankly, they probably shouldn't be, a, a, and by the way, it's a project that's been built, that's been completely built, the money's been spent on a licensed contractor, local labor, and it's done. And if there is somebody in that same exact situation, quite frankly, I'd be happy to stand here and ask for the same relief for them as well. And so respectfully, um, again, I ask if this commission would consider reversing the decision of the code enforcement magistrate and allowing this project to, to stand as is. And the alternative, I ask this commission to grant a variance of this particular, uh, application of this code pursuant to... of this code pursuant to chapter forty-two dash forty-nine of the State Ordinance. And I can answer any questions, if you would have.
Mr. Smith? I need some words to live.
Well, I'm sure everybody, you know, if everybody here read, you know, the packet, the, let me see, statement of fact is in our, in our packet. Everybody read that? When I read it too, I think you do have the authority to grant a variance as, you know, that's the county appeals, that the down, as we requested. Now, I want, want to understand what, what equitable stop is. It's a fifty cent longer term that says, "You're a stop to deny that these particular facts happened." In other words, and where the downs are coming from is that when they went and did what they thought they were supposed to do and our building officials said they didn't need a, a permit, that's where they're coming from, saying, and so they're saying that we, for instance, they go further and petition for a writ of certiorari in the service court with the next level of appeal, in that that would be one of their points on appeal, that they would say that we're a stop to deny that. The other issue, as I saw it, was just the fact of the code did not do this by attempting to pull the wool over anybody's eyes, for lack of a better term. And then, of course, also, the time that they extended to do this, it's not like they bought, you know, we have a dissent that we used before that you buy into a property. In other words, if you buy a piece of property knowing full well that you can't build on it, and then you come in and you want to build on it, well, you know, why'd you buy it? You know, why didn't you do your, in fact, that you're doing diligence to, you know, when you're attempting to purchase a piece of property? From what I read, and, and this, I think that they did do a good diligence in this particular area. The only thing, right, that's on, of course, is when he met with me and asked about what the procedure would be, and they, they didn't come to me, and so I said, "Well, you know, here's what your procedure should be." I, I thought my first look down, I said, "Well, you got a problem here." You know, I was, "You got a problem here because the board might say, well, you know, you don't want to set a precedent with regard to granting this variance or overruling the magistrate." The magistrate's ruling was a, was a good ruling, in that he gave all the issues, but then again, once, they, they were kind of locked in because then they were going to appeal to the same person that had denied it in the first place, which is kind of like a motion for the hearing is what that is, sometimes that's what it's called. So, your issues are, number one, thinking about these folks that own the property in your county. Number two, the issue of them not getting maybe proper notice of what they needed to do. Number three, and it's no, and I'm not talking bad about our, our building officials, they do, they do a good job, come to that. And then you look at over the, the recommended action, you know, I was reading over this last night, the recommended action seems like it's vast, it's for the appelle, appelle to this issue. Did I read that long?
This was submitted by, by the attorney general.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's.
That needs to be clarified then, yeah, okay. Well, we'll clarify it. That's their, not that has to make that recommendation, but it looked like you read that, it looked like that, because in our, our notice is that, you know, to get a recommended action and, so, I may, I may, I may write up a particular case, okay? So, here's your, your issue, you can, you can, you did two things, either one of those things that has brought an answer, or the alternative, you can deny it. But, and it's a simple, pretty alternate, not for me to make, because does it make any question?
Yes.
You, you clarify it.
Does the board have any questions, Brunner?
I've got something to say about it.
Say it again?
He, he took, he went and got, everything started good in the screen room. Now, looking at it, it's so long, it's heavy.
Yeah.
And he wasn't trying to pull the wool over somebody's eyes, and he already had the wool pulled out in some kind of way, so you don't go from a screen room to a bathroom and then windows and a deck underneath and grill sitting there and an air conditioning in the window and all that stuff from a screen room. And it's unfair to the other people that rebuilt down there and had to build the case. It's completely unfair to them. And I'm one of them. I walked out in ninety-three, I got outside, I had to go around twenty-one foot, and I went through all the permits process and did, did the right thing, I had to deliver. And it's unfair to the people that haven't spent their money to go twenty-one foot and do, and get the right permits to do all this. He went from a screen room, a kitchen room, whatever you want to call it, to a full blown house without the permit. So, that's where I stand with it.
Anybody else?
What I'm looking at is, they were involved down through the jurisdiction, who has jurisdiction. And in my state, it would be the federal or annual state government, where the Corps of Engineers should have been there, among the available changes of footprint, regardless of how tall, regardless of how far up and then out. And we have jurisdiction up to the water. This property is over the water. So I don't even understand how they even got to the county level and you had anything to do with it, a yay or a nay.
I can clarify that, okay? And just to clarify, they did get an electrical permit. I think, from what I understand, a permit was not issued for the plumbing. And that's the section of the code that they are not in compliance with is, they did not, they did not request a plumbing permit, which is where the county got involved, and they did not build to the twenty-two feet.
You can look out there at Dark Island, those kitchen houses and those boat houses in the canal, they're all over the water. Some of them have towers, but they got lifts and stuff in the way, but, and they got permits to get that fish and run to those ships all over the water. But if they're taking a screen room, over the canal and turning into a house, I mean, I mean, that's unfair to the people that had to go through this, to really jump through the deal.
You've already acquired a sewer, have a sewer pool. So the Water Association now has already gone through the D E P comment and a lot of it.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Well, we, we are, we are already out of our hands.
The county gave him a permit for a screen room or didn't give him a permit, so we don't, we don't hear from him.
You're mistaken though.
So we're the screen room, that's the D E P and Corps of Engineers. And at that point, the county's office offered us. So he took, that, he took Corps of Engineers and D E P's rules, went to build a screen room, and then turned it into a house, which looks like me, I might be wrong, but everybody looked at it just like.
That on the bottom, is that where the screen rooms, both of it?
If I may, so that, that's a storage area that was always meant to be there, it's the structure that.
It's just referred to as a cabin.
Between, correct, correct. And, and it was just like that, except without windows and without plumbing. And I certainly, if I may respond briefly, I certainly appreciate and respectfully what Commissioner Moody is, is saying, the only, my only comment to that, and I said this and I apologize for repeating myself, is that when they decided to change by adding the bathroom, they did, they did request the approval of one of those government authorities. Now, I, I confess now in hindsight, they should have gone back and asked everybody. I get that, but, but when they were told that they were okay, I think they felt that they were.
They got a grinder bump for the screen room to put a bathroom in, that's fine, you know, but they get a reason to sort it out, they just want a place to put a counter plate. And you can get a grinder bump and a bit of a sewer hook down there and a fire pole for a trailer, or a camp truck.
Yes, sir.
And that's where it started, what you said, start with, and you know, part of it was going to be a trailer lot.
That was their intent, yes.
But it's, it's turned into a, it's turned into a beat up, which looks like me, you know.
It, it's definitely what I would refer to as a cabin at this point. I do respect, with the Commissioner.
But you take this house, being loaded and all the houses built twenty-one foot, I know this house is there that was loaded, they must have just gone to the center and survived, that's one of their loads, but this house there, if people wash their roof and tear up one of their houses, they could not, not found a house with one twenty-one foot house, you know, that's a problem. I mean, they're not, they're more.
Let me, let me say where I'm coming from. These folks, as you said, have clean hands. I don't think they intentionally did anything wrong.
Yes.
Now, it turns out that Commissioner Moody has thought it out, you know, they're, they're not, they've built the same standards as everybody else has. So I'm torn between, you got clean hands, you didn't intend to get into all this, and then part of that, it's over the water, and then you'd be permitted by the federal courts and not our county department, but that bothers me a little bit. And John, you brought up, did we have jurisdiction over the permitting for that, John? So, I'm, I'm, I'm torn one way or the other.
Now, before we go any further, somebody had a hand up.
I did too.
Some call, that's the end of the address.
Ursula Miller, I was with Peter Island. I went through a situation like this on our own personal home, where the county said it was okay to go in and take three room and make storage on our middle deck. And then it ended up where we came back and got red tags. Is this room built to FEMA standards, breakaway walls, such as that?
It's been engineered good.
And, and that's what we in turn had to do higher than that. We had to draw out plans, bring them back to the county. However, it's not a living quarters, what we did. It's just for storage and a basic indoor where we can have a big two door evening, something like that. It's not anything living, there's no restroom or anything like that. If you make this narrative on here, I can assure you that you're going to have people lined up at the door with the same situation, coming in here asking for, what are you asking for? I'm not opposed to it and I'm not for it, I'm just telling you, they'll be lined up at the door.
That's where I'm going with it. You let one slide fifteen foot high and go in and put a bathroom and air conditioning and windows and something, then all them big thing now is a burning cabin, real quick.
No, there's, there's, I have a possibility somewhere I know now, but perhaps them had recently, breakage, kind of the same situation where they've had it, electrical plumbing in bathrooms, just such a sad on bottom level, and now they're getting packed for it.
Thank you, Ursula. And that's it. Richard Carr. Say your name and address, please.
Richard Carr, Peter Island. Like yourself, Jim, and others in the room, I was down there in the storm of the century. I went through it, you know, my house went through it, it got damaged, it got damaged severely, and it's been razed up since then. We already are skirting the law, is it is right now? I said maybe not the law, but we're skirting enforcement issues down there now, because there are way more than one so-called screen porch, screened-in room, that has built-in, you know, bathrooms, so on and so forth, but it just has a metal building over it. So I kind of like Ursula with Jim, if you pass this variance right here, it's going to just open up a complete can of worms that we already have. That's a controversial legend down there now with Darby, and it's just going to increase that, that's my, my opinion on it.
At the time they were doing this, this for the screen room, I know the building official was not aware.
So, so my understanding is, they took the, the plan that they had provided to the competing Army Corps to the building official, and the building official indicated two reasons why the, the county wouldn't permit the process, didn't need permit the process, that a screen room that was over the water.
Any of them?
Correct.
Not a.
No, that was definitely, it was midpoint of the project that they asked their builder to add a bathroom, and the builder said, "Well, you need to go back and see if that's okay." They went to the Army Corps, the Army Corps said it was okay, and so at that point, based on all the information they had, they felt that it was okay, and their, and their building contractor went ahead and built it. And I, I mention the building contractor, not in any way to suggest that he's done something wrong, and I don't mean to say anything wrong here, but, but I, I think that's one more level of my client that I'm clean hands here, in the sense that they hired some of these licensed builders, they didn't know which authorities to go, go back to and ask for permission for these types of things, and they only went to the Army Corps, and they received approval. I, I don't, and I don't think there's any evidence, and I don't think, I, I don't think my client intentionally said, "Let's go to the only government authority who will say yes, so that we don't have to go anywhere that says no." I just don't think they, they felt at that point they needed to go back to the county. I think from their perspective, it, it was something that was not within, respectfully, the jurisdiction of the county, and, and that, that was the position that they took. I've never heard, the reason I brought it up, and the reason I brought up this position when I, when I spoke to him originally, about this idea of, are we setting a precedent for other situations? And again, respectfully, I just don't, folks that have gone and not had clean hands and approved some of these, these things in the cabins, that is not the same situation. It didn't was a reason to come in here and ask for a variance. I think it would have to be for somebody else to come in here and ask for the same type of variance, should you, should you all decide to grant it here, or should you all decide to reverse the Code Enforcement Magistrate? I think it would have to be understanding that fact here, and I think these facts are pretty unique. I'm not, and I'm not saying it's unique, lots of people were damaged by the storm of the century, lots of people were, lots of people were. But this is different in that it was storm of the century damage with a land swap with the state, with D E P approval, with Army Corps of Engineers approval, with somebody who went in and asked for the county authority and reported they didn't need it, who hired a building contractor and all the other things that I presented here today. And so I think that, that isn't exactly the precedence of the folks who have maybe not clean hands, could have done something, maybe, maybe.
Um, any more questions? No, it's enough.
And, and.
It doesn't look like a screen room.
Well, and I was having this, it affected the photos you're looking at, that, that footprint you're looking at is exactly what it was when it was the screen room. In fact, from the exterior, the only thing that changed is windows put over the screen room, so they didn't expand it, they didn't make it bigger, they didn't change anything about it. It was going to look like that, except with three.
It's just a day of the bathroom. So everything on the day of the bed.
Well, just a little living room area, or with a bench inside, if someone was sitting side and stuff like that, it's out of the bathroom.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
To correct these decisions.
Yes.
You'd have to go up to twenty-one and add these.
But it's that, yeah, yes, yes.
And one of them.
And build land underneath the.
Why would you have to build land underneath?
Well, my understanding that Taylor County's division is that because they don't permit things that are over the water, in order for them to permit this, for the, for the code that this applies, and it needs to be over the land, and to make the land that you build seawall and you build land underneath, it's kind of a, "We don't permit things over the water, but we want to permit this, you need to make it over the land" kind of situation.
Well, if we don't permit it over the water, what kind of county does? They don't have a lot of land, why are they in the block? The block's unclosed.
I think that a screen room over the water is a little different than an enclosed cabin over the water, is what I would say to that. I think when that statement was made, it was presented as a screen room, not a, a cabin, if you might go.
My point is, if we got permission, Corps of Engineers and other authorities higher and above, to do what you, along with statements within that, that's fair. And then, and then go up fifteen feet, and then you can build a screen room or a house up there. Am I clear on that?
Well, they, they, they originally said it was a screen room, then when they changed it and decided to add the bathroom, they asked for additional approval, and were told that the question was, "Wait a minute, are you changing the footprint?" Because the R D is getting approval, and they said, "We're not changing the footprint." And they said, "Okay, we don't need, we don't need a new approval." But the height was kind of goofy. The height from the Army Corps was fifteen. But the height is kind of goofy, the height from the Army Corps was fifteen. So, twenty-two feet over land, and then fifteen feet over water.
That would have to be the disconnect, right?
That, that was, that was the disconnect, if I...
Not for residents.
Well, they're not residents, it's not a resident building. No, they, they, well, they're not going to do it anymore, they use it as a...
A livable residence, I'm gonna say, if somebody live there full of time, but you gonna send a mountain, like, you know.
Well, we've come across it, I don't know if they would live in it or not, because it's a livable...
I think you could live in it, sure, yeah, I think that's true. Um, but I do, I do agree that there is, um, I think to answer your question, uh, what I've been told by, in my constitution, the building officials is, yes, they're gonna have two options, either take it back down to screen room or raise it up twenty-two feet and add this land underneath it. I, I will say that I, um, I don't think it's possible for them to raise twenty-two feet at this point, because they, they, the pilons they put in aren't high enough, so I'm not sure how they even engineer that. But, uh, I have been struck by the sort of interplay between the county's not permitting things over the water, the federal and the state government does, but the county will object to things being built over the water under certain circumstances. So, and I guess that there's, there's, again, my clients just wanna try to do the right thing here, but they also just wanna not lose all this money that they, that they spent.
The next question is, what is your next step if you cannot get an answer from us today?
Well, if I get no answer, I'll wait for an answer, but if the answer is, is against my clients, my next step, as Mr. Bishop pointed out, would be to appeal to the circuit court.
You can build a house right where that's at, but it's have to be to code, code campus. But they can raise, they can raise that house up to code, and they can put five hundred, it's done a lot of times. People do it, they've changed houses in Peter Island everywhere up from eight foot off the ground up to code. I mean, it could be done.
I'm sure that there's an engineer that, that can do it. I, I'm, some very rough estimate that I've gotten, I think, is around a hundred thousand dollars to do that. Um, I will tell this condition, my clients don't have a hundred thousand dollars to do it, but I, but I agree with your premise, that I think that probably an engineer could figure out a way to do it.
It could be done, but then you gotta go through the whole permitting process and do it right, like everybody else, that's the way.
But our permitting process doesn't require this, because it's over water.
If it had been building a house for residents over the water, not a screen room, it would have got into the higher building part. It wouldn't have been on anything.
That's not, not, you know. Well, I, I think, I think building a, a cabin or residence of any kind does definitely implicate the county's building, uh, code. It's the over the water thing, which is, I think, where, where we're in gray area. Because, because again, the building officials have told me they would have permitted it, but only if we, we needed land underneath it to make it so it's not over the water. Um, and so, it, it is over the water, um, and that's what, that was, that's what was approved by the, the other government authorities. Because there's just gonna be an interplay here, um...
I had a house that was pulled down over the water, and before we knew it, then D E P told me I could build a house back. But when it comes to building it back, I could not get flood insurance over the water. It was a government charge. So you can't get financing to build a house over the water or build anything without flood insurance. And that's where it taught me from building it back over the water, where I, so I got back up on the hill and built a house up.
Yes, again, the only information I have is from the building officials, it says there needs to be twenty-two feet and, and over land. It's at fifteen feet and over water right now. Um, and, and I, I, you bring up insurance, I will say that, that, um, I, I honestly, I don't know if my clients have one or none. The only thing I would say about that is that I think that, that's a, a market-based, uh, thing anyway. If they decide not to insure it, it's their loss, or somebody else decides not to insure it, it's their loss. Or if they decide to pay the insurance, it's their loss, but...
Let me ask you this question. If we ran a variance on this situation, then we've got a house down here that's fifteen feet rather than twenty-one and a half feet. Would that jeopardize the whole flood, flood insurance regulation that counts, fit very well, and fit very well?
Yeah, and one of the problems of, uh, you know, of being under the twenty-two feet is if, in fact, uh, 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 the house blown away, and then it hits other houses, it's kind of, uh, those issues before, uh, before the court, that kind of issue. Uh, also, the issue of, of financing is true, that if you're gonna get financing, you've got to have flood insurance, um, other than, uh, flood insurance program, so...
So in all, those who build, who have flood insurance available, you don't wanna do that. That's, that's a, it's a lot along the way.
And I, and I, I, I appreciate that.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
At any point in the process, after the screen room was changed from a screen room, you started adding windows and stuff, was there a bill paid by our local code enforcement folks, saying, hey man, you can't do this?
Uh, no.
Stop.
It was, um, the, the, no, no.
That is hard to buy an over here until the toilet adds, has a little building.
Well, I mean, I, my, my assertion would be, and again, respectfully, that I, I think they may have initially learned about it by an email from the D E P in August of twenty eighteen. They, they learned about Scuzzillo, and after they issued the, the violation notice in February twenty nineteen.
Okay, we can talk about that now.
And if I could clarify about that, building the house over the water, our flood ordinance and Florida building code doesn't allow building a house over the water, so that may be why we don't permit it, because it's not allowed, from what I understand. So it's, I don't know that it's a question of, well, we don't have authority over that, or more of a, it's not allowed.
Um, I haven't briefed that specific issue, obviously, so I don't want to necessarily comment on that, but I just know that, again, my, my request for relief is more so based on my, my clients, what they were, what they were advised and things like that, and the position they're in now today.
All right. Any more questions, Brian? I'll give you another shot.
I, I just saw a re-picture of a photo, but is there not parking underneath that home with a little storage shed?
No, it's down on the front end, I think, parking on the land, it's your land.
You can look at the picture of what, what the house, they got washed away in the storm of the century, what the frame looked like. The house was over the water, but it's got six foot off the mud, you know, it's about six foot high. And the pictures of those frames, what over the edge of the house was. The road out was like that, you know.
Okay, so, Carl, anybody else?
My question is...
No, I just wanna, wanna...
Yeah, Tom. See, my question is, why would the D E P and the Army Corps of Engineers, if you promised it with any completion anywhere? Because I'm pretty sure they were thoroughly ahead of them.
They didn't know it was gonna be a residence or a...
And if they did, for the time, so under their specifications, it's not. Have they appealed it? Have they argued the defense?
No.
See, where I'm trying to get at is jurisdiction, if it was over the land, we have to abide by the county, county law anyways, twenty-two feet. But since it's being over the, the water, and I'm pretty sure they explore the channels of, of exploration with that, in which they went to the software to, to this town. So, we're boiled down to this, and, and my view, out of our interest in the, the Army Corps of Engineers, we have hardly any funding, nothing.
Well, what do we, what do we do with it?
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, because we have, we have county codes that doesn't allow it. It doesn't allow that.
Well...
So, well, our section forty-two of our code does not allow a residence or a building at fifteen feet. I mean, that's what our code says. That's why our code enforcement officer got involved, and it went to the special magistrate, and why you're rejecting it. Because it's, it's the height which is in the flood area, and that's what, that's why we do have jurisdiction because of our code.
And, and again, just, just respond to that. You know, when it started at a screen room, and I, and I did hear Commissioner Murphy concern that it could blow down and on properties elsewhere, if it was a screen room, we wouldn't be here, because there wouldn't be any code enforcement. The screen room could blow down just plain. So I don't know, uh, that that's necessarily an operative fact as much as, um, I, I understand that the, that, that the code that are, are, were, were, there was a notice of violation issued, and the code enforcement magistrate issued this ruling based on the fact that it wasn't a screen room anymore, but it turned into a more of a residential cabin type of structure. But I, I think everything that we've discussed here today still, still is, is a valid concern about the sort of interplay that happens that. And Commissioner Dennis, um, just to answer your question, what are we doing here? If Commissioner Murphy is correct, this isn't our jurisdiction. From my perspective anyway, and I, and I'm here to represent my clients, is, is they are under a, an order right now, starting on May seventeenth, to either have that, that, those improvements removed or pay, I think, a hundred dollar or a hundred fifty dollar basis.
All right, I remember you said it, I, I, I really sympathize with you. If President bought it and thought he was building a screen room that had a change of heart, that's when the... But when you, and then, and then when I look at the ages of, of the people there, it's probably one in the order, nobody could really long give that. That's why, we have to catch the point too, uh, and especially if we give, if it's a possibility, we losing our, uh, buildings to have insurance down on the beach, or in that area, that, that is some a lot of stuff to get, to, if one, if one...
And admittedly, I haven't briefed that specific issue, and if, if, you know, if, if, if it's ultimately gonna come down to that, I would ask the opportunity to brief that issue. Um, again, the only thing I would say about that is if it's about reality, we, we know that there's a lot of folks who have, without any kind of clean hands or without any kind of clearance, have all been approved of their properties on those, on those beaches, um, to these, to these cabins. If that's not affecting, uh, the ability to get flood insurance, I don't know why it necessarily would, I would. And, and Commissioner Murphy's point, um, it may just be a matter of that it, it just did not, do not classify or deem this a residential structure, um, based on, I think, what Commissioner Murphy's argument.
Everybody visiting and bright, the screen room, and it's plugged in, what's the rare thing? The D E P has been reporting to them, I mean, there's a lot of difference. And, uh, if he's got it up to sail over the river, I don't know what it's to sail for, I don't know if it is, but there's a lot of difference in price selling a screen room, selling something that you could sleep in, yeah, with a bathroom.
All right, that's the screen thing, it's plugged in here. I'm adding one motion one way or the other. Tom, Tom, can we use first back at it?
Well, based on my understanding of jurisdiction, if a home was built over land, we have jurisdiction. If, if structures built over water, we have no jurisdiction. He's already gone through the permit, the D E P, and the federal government. And you're right, Mr. Murphy, there's a lot of illegal structures down here on the beach, a lot of law that do need to be addressed. So I don't think that this is going to open the can of worms of issuance of insurance. That can of worms has already been over a long time.
So I, I gather that you would be willing to back the motion to grant a variance on that particular situation?
Because we're gonna come to find out, we have no jurisdiction.
Grant a variance, I'm, I'm... Grant a variance. Why, I'm looking at permission from Murphy to grant the variance of the outstanding of section forty-two, that's nine eighty-one of the Tampa County Code, allowing Mr. Miss Allen to keep their structure as constructed. It would have a second. I'll relax this again, I'll, I'll, I'll walk for a second. Yeah, a motion and a second. Is there any others?
All in favor of the motion? Say yes.
Aye. Good, I'm again.
Well, that's very, I have no idea, I think, yeah, yeah, all, yeah, I got recorded. Commissioner Murphy, Commissioner Page, what is your...
Mm. I try to do good here. I don't want to, uh, sort of present it, just don't leave it down here, don't make some...
That's enough. So the motion failed on two, two votes. And no variance has been approved.
Uh, yes, uh, I, I guess just while, procedurally, while we're here, um, could I also ask for the other relief, which would be to reverse the decision of the code enforcement magistrate, which would ar- arguably not grant any kind of variances and any concerns about precedent, I think at that point would not be a concern, because it would really just be reversing the code enforcement magistrate's, uh, decision.
I'll... Affirmative, Mr. Bishop. Does it have any authorities that show code enforcement magistrate?
No, it does.
You can't believe, uh, y'all have the time.
We're the pilots, so y'all got the time, so...
All right, the chair will ask, is there a motion to overturn or reverse the ruling of the code enforcement magistrate, by you, Mr. Miss Allen, in violation of forty-two, that's nine eighty-one of the Tampa County Code? This would stop fifty dollars a day.
Yes, sir.
I get it. And if, and if, it'd be almost the same thing as granted, a variance.
Well, I think, I think it probably would be, but I think it'd be without precedent. It would be, I think it would be acceptance that the magistrate could have accepted the affirmative dissent. Um, and so it's not, it's not necessarily a finding that there wasn't a code violation as much as a finding that the affirmative dissent of color of law, stopper should apply.
Otherwise, if I vote for this, what you get is, it would stop the fine, but what about the violation, violation period?
Well, again, I think, I think legally speaking, and Mr. Bishop may disagree with me on this, I think that, yes, the violation would still exist, but I think the violation wouldn't be enforced on, based on the concept of a stopper or a color of law.
Okay, that's, it's a lot of this, but...
Any more than that, I don't...
Well, it, I, it would stop the enforcement of the code in this particular case, is what I think it would do. But yes, but, but that would include no fifty dollars a day.
Tom, I hate motions. Motion by Commissioner Murphy. Is that where reverse the ruling on the code enforcement magistrate? It would have a second. I'll relax this, I'll, I'll second that motion.
You have a motion and a second to reverse the code enforcement denial, and it would stop receipt for non-compliance.
I'll vote no on that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If wrong, because I prefer, I prefer him, and people that built the code down there, they do this, it's true. On the favor, that's any kind of way.
All in favor, Commissioner Dean? Much in favor.
Much in favor, on two, two votes. Thank you, thank you, appreciate you. Now, you can go down one other avenue, that's over across the street, go down.
That's great.
All right, David, thank you, appreciate you. Our sixth team. Commissioner Kennedy, they're on county development authority, T C D A Economic Development Coordinator, to appear to provide an update on the T C D A. This is good seeing you.
Thank you, thank you. You're more than just a nurse, um, I'm here with our chairman Wallace Holmes. Uh, my effect's gonna be released today. Uh, we are gonna have our next meeting Thursday, actually, uh, this, this Thursday afternoon at the T C D A office. Uh, as you know, we were advertising for a board vacancy, and that closed on the twenty-eighth, and the applications have been forwarded, and you, um, will be discussing them at this meeting. And we're coming into, uh, the rest, general plan opportunities as well, and looking at, um, uh, who may choose to project on the right.
There's more. You did a good job over there.
Thank you.
You're a lot of good company.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
Watson, you wanna add anything?
I'll just, I'll add, we're in purple, y'all think, Fisher does a tremendous job up there. And, uh, we're getting a few people coming in, asking questions, but some of them might be coming to y'all knowing your county's nature, and y'all refer them up to our office, and we can take care of, try to answer questions, show them properly. We've got several locations that are available for people to build on, and, uh, we're working on about three projects right now, the possibility of business coming in here.
Thank you, appreciate the update.
Thank you.
The minutes booked, that we're saying, you know, thanks from T C D A. Moving along to the next item, the board, out of seventeen. If the board can consider a form of a one, a mechanic's federal authority board member, as agenda by me, fifty ten, T C D A coordinator, we have some tech work to do. Now... Now, we have three members, James, Junior Reed, Jennifer Scott Black, and John Fink. And we're to rate these ones, two and three, for number one, being your highest state.
Don't forget to say...
In time. We'll come back in a few minutes, Mr. Bishop.
Yes, we know.
We will, I'll vote. Now, these ballots are public, right? If you want to know how I voted or anybody else, you have to let me know. I'll let you see and do it. Say the clerk, say the legal, or whenever, and if there's available. Item eighteen, constitutional office, doesn't go no use, and that's part of the agenda. The Board to consider approval of the Edward Byers Memorial Justice Certificate, grant, and get a G, reimbursed. Now, federal for the Taylor County Sheriff's Office, keep the state reimbursed. And the agenda is by Captain Jim Cash. Captain Cash can't be here today, so a lot of law on this bill.
So the purpose of this grant, from what I understand, was is reimbursement to the purpose of twenty-two encased thermal printers for the uniform patrol division, and this is so they can print out citations, justice, warnings, incident reports, et cetera. They are asking for the Board to approve the application for reimbursement and to keep the reimbursement.
Which is about three thousand dollars.
Three thousand thirty-six dollars.
Big amount of money, you kind of do the first hour, it's off. I feel just, do whatever. You want to have a look? Somebody didn't sign?
I did, I just put my name on my first, I think, but, um...
You need approval, Ron. That's my case, they approve. Motion by Commissioner Dent to approve. We got to talk to Commissioner Murphy. Discussion, all the favors, say aye. Aye, any opposed, say no. Of course, there are none. Motion carries. Now, let's go to the next item, which is kind of staff items. Board to consider approval of the help D O T, that's Florida Department of State, county incentive, incentive rent program, TCD, small county outreach program, stocks, reimbursement agreement, re-instruct and re-instruct First Avenue South, Dean Hanks, as well as the execution of said agreement, so the adoption of an authorized resolution for the execution of the agreement upstairs. And agenda by the... Don't call me to do.
I'll start calling it TCD, myself.
Say B. We never talked.
No, it's your six B.
Six B.
Yes, there is. If the county's in a grant program, and it basically is funding that the state offers to the county for those projects which are to release industrial and state licenses. This being in close proximity to Riverside, it has the advantage of encouraging traffic along that way versus the state highway movement. This is one that we put on the priority list, leaving the Board of County Commissioners since twenty thirteen. It's finally made its way through the hoops and hurdles, and it has finally made its way into an agreement that is being offered to the Board. So we are suggestive that you go ahead and recommend that you approve the agreement, and then that you also authorize with the reading of a resolution by title for the Chairman to sign on behalf of the Board.
My first will ask for authorisation to approve the agreement. Motion by Commissioner Murphy. Second by Commissioner Moody. All favors say aye. Aye, any opposed, say no. The motion carries, and we've agreed to approve the agreement. Now, there's a resolution filed with Mr. Bishop. We have a motion to ask Mr. Bishop to read this resolution by title, please. Motion by Commissioner Dent. Second by Commissioner Moody. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no, the motion carries.
Avenue found, uh, TCD, you vote, agreement, signature authorization. Where the Board of County Commissioners have informed that a resolution to be passed authorizing the care of the Board of County Commissioners to enter and do it, lead part of the transportation county incentive grant, small county outreach program, reimbursement agreement, re-instruct and re-instruct First Avenue South, Dean Hanks, from State Route fifty-one to State Route fifty-one, approximately one point one nine miles.
So I'm placing this position. Uh, and then a motion to stop the resolution. I made my motion by Commissioner Murphy. Second by Commissioner Moody. Discussion, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no. No, oppositions for motion and resolution back.
Thank you, sir.
Move sidewalk.
Yes, sir. I actually did include in the original cost estimate to rework the sidewalk that's on the north side of the highway. There's an existing one that goes up to ninth, I believe it is, right there at Madison Market. And then, um, I am going to extend it all the way to the west, where it interconnects with rear side of First Avenue, right there on the curb, which will include a little bit of edge and restructure it, the box culvert. So that is intended to be part of the overall schedule. And if we are successful in this HMGP application, you know, we'll try to use some of that funding as well to address the drainage while we're doing the same project.
Okay. Thank you. While we're hard work on this, can we...
No problem.
Uh, this will be a work on that.
Ast Street is actually, it's already in its queue. It is intended, the agreement for that, the dollars are expected to be typically of twenty twenty-two. There's one point seven five million dollars that's going to be included with that, with the intent of going from US nineteen all the way down to a favor of more. So just got a little awfully on that one. That one didn't actually make it.
You can extend it all the way, because I think to the end of Ast Street, another block, right?
I guess we could, um, we would have, if I'm not mistaken, we have to take and amend the application to do that, so.
You wouldn't do that, we all would act with, instead of stopping that thing. And then you got two blocks, a block and a half.
Yes, sir.
It can't.
Okay.
It's not... That's a good question. Yeah, thank you for all you do for us.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bishop?
John Singer is, um, he's young, selected.
All right, we need a motion. Put him on the dollar planer as one of the TCDA board. Of course, Mr. Bishop is gay. Motion by Commissioner Murphy, second by Mr. Dent. Discussion, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, motion carries. Mr. John Singer is now a board member. I applaud you, good job. Now, we're on item twenty. The Board to consider approval of pass order with Astcon Incorporated to prepare bid documents and require specification of the runway obstruction, free clearing project at Perry Foley Air Force, as agenda by Miller Cox Grant Line. Mr. Dent, go ahead.
These are for the off-site street, particular.
Item run, three thousand and two strokes.
So Astcon will be working with Mr. Bishop's force, and they will be helping us write the letters and work with the property, affected property owners, prepare the bid documents, and oversee the project for us. And we are, we do have funding for their fees.
Their funding is from the eight-inch bucket?
From the D O T.
D O T?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, he no costs, but...
No, sir, and there are consultants, there are airport consultants, so we just need to issue a pass order for them.
And they're going to be required in this agreement, contact the landowners.
Well, they'll also contact the landowners, I would say, no.
And then we'll come back with another agreement, and who is going to harvest, print the proof?
Yes. Well, I would put that out, if it is.
Okay. Ready for motion to approve the pass order? A motion by Mr. Dent, second by Commissioner Moody. Discussion, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, the motion carries.
Thank you.
To approve the pass order, item. We are at item twenty-one. The Board to consider approval of request to waive boat ramp fees for the Hooked on Heroes Tank of Balance Fishing Event, to be held Saturday, April fourth, twenty twenty, as agenda by Commissioner Murphy. Mr. Dent, what Hooked on Heroes is?
Yes, sir. I'm not sure if everybody here is familiar with it. Well, Mr. and Mrs. Long, who are at least four years in the road now, have put on this Hooked on Heroes as a saving veteran, a saving fish. One thing I can say about it, it's grown. This time of year, there'll probably be a thousand people out there on the boat. Saving veterans, it's growing at least a hundred, hundred fifty people a year. So we can honor our saving veterans by at least waiving parts. Commissioner Dent will ask for twenty-five passes.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five. They said they need twenty-two last year. What do you want to say, Mr. Dent?
I feel like a motion would do what we need to do.
I ain't voting.
Uh, motion, motion to grant to the village twenty-five passes. This is for Dean Hanks, boat ramp, for this nonprofit organization, search our veterans. I think the best thing to do, John, the motion, second by Commissioner Moody. Discussion, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, the motion carries. Glad to be able to do this.
Absolutely, thank you.
So we go all our, that's a great...
Yes, sir. It works for our veterans, speaking German or Russian or something.
That's right, about being a concentration champion, that's God forbid. Item twenty-three, the Board to consider approval of revised Restore Act Direct Compartment Grant Program Application. Item twenty-two. Item twenty-two, I've got Board to receive a quarter of that, worked by Langton, Langton and Subs Incorporated on construction engineering and inspection services provided by Taylor County R A, competitors and employers by rail. That's a secret.
Secret.
That's the rail. I love cross ties, that's about the rail. Yeah, about the rail.
I absolutely will. I'm Heather Pullman, Lightfoot Associates, and I'm the brand administrator for this project. Um, and when we were last here in October, we announced that we will be getting a procurement process for the construction and rail work for this project. And I was like, I'm happy to announce that we worked really hard over the holidays, and we were successful in completing the procurement process. And we, to date, we have issued five contracts and notices to proceed to three different rail firms throughout the nation. Um, one being a disadvantaged business, the other being a women's owned business. We searched them out using the six affirmative steps to securing these types of businesses, and we were lucky to find them, and now they will be working on the project as well. Uh, we are mobilizing, and we are on schedule for an early ease, March twenty twenty construction date. So I'm excited to also announce that I will be working with Lawanda and the Railroad Marketing Team to schedule a groundbreaking on March thirteenth at ten a.m. at Rosehead Park. Hope to see you all there, and you will be receiving your invitation soon. Any questions?
Any questions before? No questions. That's all we do, move forward. That's a lot of cross ties, somebody got to put in.
Thanks, Liz, honey.
Maybe not, not these, you said, yes, the minority, female contractors.
Yes.
They're just big, they're entire.
No, they are, they are actually doing the employee in charge, so they will be kind of the second-hand monitoring of the project to make sure everybody's...
Again, thank you, appreciate all you do for us. Now, we go to number twenty-three. The Board to consider approval of revised Restore Act Direct Compartment Grant Program Application for the planning and design of TCD, Dean Hanks Program Redding Project, as agenda by Edward Fuller, man's administrator, Langton and Subs. Now, I want to take here to talk about redging.
Yes. So this is our first grant application, and when we were last here to make a report in October of last year, we were preparing for the seminal, and we asked for your approval, which thank you, you gave us your approval, and Madam Chairperson was able to submit the grant in the online system provided by Treasury. About a week after the grant application was submitted to a full review to Treasury, we were informed that our assigned Treasury representative, who had been with us for over a year during the drafting of the application, and had conducted the desktop review, was being reassigned. And so we would be receiving a new Treasury employee and representative who was still in the learning process. We basically had to start from scratch before October thirty-first. Um, that set us back with the holidays, unfortunately. Uh, in January of this year, upon resubmission, our application was rejected once again from Treasury for further edits. And so I, as the administrator, I typically come in after the get mine team is done, and we have a grant award, but I decided to step in and make a phone call to find someone with authority at Treasury, and I requested a conference call with the executor of the grant, my request, and I worked directly with the head boss in charge at Treasury to compute an agreement on these edits, so that we could submit one final application and go to a war that's back to March first. The, um, from that, we are requesting your final approval of this grant application as approved by Treasury to get them. Um, so upon your approval today of the grant application, we will look to Madam Chairperson to have it resubmitted in the online system, and then we will go sixty days to afford. So now we're looking at one on April first, award date, get this project started. Uh, apart of this, you include your approval of new pass orders that will be submitted with the grant application. Those pass orders resulted in a reduction of the overall grant budget. We started with a grant budget of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, which included planning and design, as well as R P for professional consultancy services from, for the development of the application, excuse me, as well as the implementation of the project for the year-long planning period. Um, we decided to take a cut, um, after our conversations with the, reduce or reduction in our budget after talking with Department of Treasury, and we have decided to go back to our original contract that we have with the county, that includes three percent fee for grant writing and seven percent for grant administration. And we will not exceed that at any given time, and Treasury finally, after two years of going back to forth, have accepted this agreement. And so we will not have to bring our contract back to you once again for changing opinions on their level. So the pass orders say that we'll be all reducing our fees from the original forty thousand dollars that was approved by you all in twenty eighteen. We are now reducing it to thirteen thousand five hundred for the first year. Once the year planning period is over, we will submit a new grant application for the construction for the actual dredging of both TCD to Mount and Dean Hanks Boat Ramp Basin project.
And these funds are the pot one for store-act funds?
That's correct.
How much is in that fund?
We have about one point three million, and in April, we'll receive...
Another...
A little bit more, another...
Is that sufficient?
Couple hundred thousand.
From what you know now to do boat project? Man can out, you can do that, you can do that.
Yes, and that's another reason why this planning and design project has changed. So, you know, Kelly, you've been working with Mr. Dudley. So, you know, family, you've been working with, uh, Mr. Dudley, um, and so this, this project budget has, uh, changed significantly, significantly from, uh, what we first started, but we are in a comfortable place now. We believe that after one year of planning and design and, and hiring an expert come in, doing a procurement process, hiring experts, having them come in and give us real numbers, we do believe that the construction budget is sufficient.
And that will be, hopefully, no cost to come, we'll all, we all Restore Act fund.
It is.
And you say, many years for planning phase?
Yes, that will allow us to, um, be sure an expert under the federal permit laws and bring them in and have them actually do a design plan. And once that design plan is, uh, submitted, we can go to close out of the grant awards. They have given us a one-year period, we don't anticipate if this will take a full year. However, we are forgiving ourselves that time to, um, in case any obstacles.
I was going to ask all the general public, when are you going to do something about this? Would be safe to say, probably about this time next year.
Spring twenty twenty.
Spring twenty one.
And in the meantime, um, I'm, I know that we've been waiting for so long, so I am going to work compensation free and go ahead and start the, uh, procurement process where I will not be reimbursed for, because we are starting before grant awards, but I want to work with, um, with Lawanda, and I want to work with Mr. Dudley, um, to get this project back into its standing.
We appreciate that. Does the board have any questions, Kevin? Yeah, man, Chris? Do we need to take any action on this, because we step this through the report?
Can you approve the, the revised grant application?
All right, need a motion to approve the revised grant application. Motion by Commissioner, uh, Murphy, second by Commissioner Dent. All the favor say aye.
Aye aye.
Any opposed say no, most carries. Thank you, have a good. Number twenty-four. The board should discuss board committee assignments as amended by the county administrator. Now, there's, and I'm in the board package, number, item twenty-four, committee assignment. And our chair is not here, so I'll just ask, I can chair today. If everybody's first, ask about where they are on this, or if anybody wants to change. For the, uh, public, have a sign responsibility for, uh, board member. Sit on the teaching area, the F C H, F. Rush Capital Hall, she's our human society person, and also she's sure on the small county coalition. She's got her hands.
And on the pass port, will I have the?
On the what?
On the encourage pass port, so will I have that.
All right, pass port. Now, Miss Faith, he has off, uh, landfill, which meets monthly. And Lawanda, we need to change that, one river economic council, that's with the dent now. Our budget time, fine time, my other lawanda needs to, uh, give money in foot. And I'm also, I'm on the small county coalition. You know, you fill out airport, and you drive to the Royal Hospital, there's one. And you also are Restore Act, uh, representative, and you're on, you know, housing the T B B G. You've got your hands full. Sean, you're the Big Ben water sewer.
We'd love to make a request to exchange with the management commission.
All right. Sean wants to change Big Ben water.
Big Ben water.
Or Indian name. Can we go through this and then we'll come back to that, Sean? Now, also I have Penn County Development, the T D C, that's tourism development county.
Yes.
And Prairie Rivers Library, and equal employment opportunities. And how do you have North Central Florida, where you're planning council and stuff? And you now have the, uh, one river economic council, and transportation dispatch, and the sea grab, and the north, north Florida economic development park, you've already got your hands full. Sean, the, uh, Big Ben water. It beats monthly, you see that? Anybody want to volunteer? Check this out. Well, I think I probably have the lift. Anybody help?
We don't have to make this decision, Dave and.
Let's wait until the chair gets, that's all I'm saying. All right, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll leave it these standing as they are, and note that Sean has requested to be taken off the Big Ben water sewer. And when Mr. Phil returns, we'll bring this back for further discussion. And nobody else to check it out with. Because I have, I think I have almost three things. Uh, not, but need even more to do. County administrator. We discuss. Informational hours.
I just wanted to share with the board and the public that we have made an addition to our website. Can you go back to the homepage? Um, on our homepage now, there is a link, um, under quick links, it reads about the proposed toll road. Um, if you click on that link, it will take you to another page where citizens can, um, give us their thoughts about the proposed toll road. Um, there's a drop down box, after the question, are you for or against the proposed toll road? You can click yes or no, um, to your, at your email address, and add any comments. Um, these emails will come to me, and we will keep track of those for or against in the comments. Now, we also put a link to the county commissioner's contact page. Um, if people want to contact the commissioner directly, they can, this will take them to another page. So, we are looking for info from the public, and we'd encourage you to do this with your constituents, so we can get some idea of how the general public feels about this proposed project.
It's great you did this. Another way, another tool we have to gauge, you know, speed and the focus on it.
We have a wonderful IT partner, give us that great help from those, so, and that's all I have.
That's all you have.
Thank you.
Yes, I heard somebody say, Mrs. Chair.
Um, yes, members, when they got adding the in-store links to the page, that they want to do confirmation of all the materials that have been covered, dated, and passed with connection.
Now we'll go through the comments and concerns from the public, for none of them is out. Richard first, thank the name and address of first. Very quick, Richard Clark, Cedar Island, get the question to the board. While we're on, uh, the whole, uh, dredging thing. Dark Island, Cedar Island, have any ballpark idea when they begin? Or what the status is and, and the race?
Sure, that is, is the board's prior thought.
Right, right, right.
And this first stage will be, be decided in the C M A, which we're talking about every night. Then after that, you'll help me out, after that, we go to Dark Island.
Dark Island.
Dark Island. We get. Cedar Island, Cedar Island, same time, isn't that the way to do it?
Yeah, that, that's why I'm curious about that.
I don't know if they'll do them Sunday night, but.
Well, I mean, they, they love.
Right, right.
Whichever comes.
Right, that's why we all.
But it'll be in order then, that, that way.
Right, maybe see this process. All right.
Government moves very slow.
And same thing with Lewis and what they asked, you all think, you say, it'll be sometime in the future.
They, they, they spread the money over fifteen years.
Oh, fifteen years, that's.
That's worth, you know, a lengthy amount of time.
Yeah. But we, we will get to it, if the money doesn't run out first. Somebody else have a hand up? Sixty ninety minutes rest.
I'm Jake Clark, I'm twenty-one thirty, Andrew Morgan Drive, Terry. And I'm going through, uh, complimentary permission on taking a kind of setback and looking at the flyback situation. I think at first, it kind of looked like it was going to be ran down the throat. And one reason, I, I like all the planning aspects of it, we always need to plan ahead. A few years ago, I had to hire a toll, and suddenly we have so many wrecks on South nineteen. And that's what was, there's no traffic, people go to sleep driving out of the hood. And so, um, what I would like to see is that the board continues to look at all avenues of this, you know, it takes ten or fifteen years to get this project done, who knows, we might not even be driving for it. But, um, I, I did want to point the eye at the storm zone, and let's say, you know, I'm not saying something shouldn't be done and playing straight, but, um, we need to move forward, because we could ruin what people are coming here for, part, part of it.
It's part. Thank you, Mary. Anybody else to a talk? I'd like to rest the board. Board information allowance. We'll start this way, tell them what you need to talk about.
This week from Cedar Island showed about that.
Oh, my.
We need to, uh, just long, we need to get together and make sure we get that situated, start, ready to start.
Everybody is going to make it worse.
And other than that, I'd like everybody to come and protect the board, and, uh, I always protect the general public, and, 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 thank y'all.
One board we did think about that, one river and the Wist County board.
Um, right, oh, I know, the top four?
Isn't that hell? That one?
Mr. Murphy, yes, sir, what I would like to make is, people are seeing that you're proposing the photograph that.
Oh, I hear that, I, I didn't expect it, but, uh, it was impressive. Friday and Saturday, I threw my practice and I went out, and I walked in crowd, and it was an hour. On Sunday, I walked, and then, remember, it was out there something. It's going to grow, and it's going to get beyond our capability of control after.